Okay. I'm gonna call the special meeting to order here. We're here to discuss, I know the Metropolitan Park District and bond financing for an aquatic recreation center. So Ethan, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and introduce this for a second. I'm gonna turn it over to Jim. But the purpose of this study session is really just to review how an aquatic and recreation center project can be financed through a Metropolitan Park District solution. It'll be a pretty high level presentation on how Metropolitan Park District formation per the possible levy options. And also a couple of examples of financing. And this is kind of just the planning work that we're doing as far as looking at more private options. There we have architects and engineers looking at that option and then we bring in Jim. And with that, this is Jim Nelson with DA Davidson. Jim has thirty years of public financing experience. As a person with a bunch of Metropolitan Parks and Metropolitan Municipalities. With that, I'm gonna go to Ethan.
Thank you, Ethan. Nice to see all the staff members. AC and Reed, we've talked down the phone number of Brian. The council members. I serve a large number of Washington City, County, Special Districts, helping with the bond financing and planning for it, whether it's voted or non-voted. I do have some extra copies that hold on a chip. I call it bedtime. Feel free to grab a copy. It's interesting. I've had like twenty requests in the first quarter of this year just on aquatic centers, pool projects, parks. It seems like there's a renewed interest to support, you know, your local parks and pool projects. So I'll walk you through, interrupt any time with questions. We'll talk about a Metropolitan Park District. I think as a quick overview, you would go to the voters. I understand that I think you want to maintain the same boundaries of the Metropolitan Park District as the city. And once assuming the voters approve it, then you can implement up to seventy-five cents per thousand. And that helps cover operating costs. I know, I don't know how it is for your aquatic center, but I know in other districts, park districts, Metropolitan Park Districts, some pool and aquatic centers. Usually the answer is, yeah, we've got something that is accurate. So that's something to think about. It's that seventy-five cents could really help. The other tip is you can implement that first year up to seventy-five cents. Whatever you implement, you want to increase that in the future, you gotta go back to the voters and ask for an increase. However, in that first year, you could implement something less than seventy-five cents. And then by council action, you could fit what we call bank levy capacity by, my time to say, bank levy resolution. If you do it by ordinance. And so maybe you choose to implement forty cents or fifty cents. But then by resolution, you bank that balance. And then you could decide what you want to impose at higher rate without them having to vote. So right there, I think that's one of the best tips. If you don't do that, yeah. So on page one, this does an overview. Metropolitan Park District gets to acquire managed main parks, sports stadiums, pools, aquatic centers, parkways, boulevards, recreation facilities. Back in two thousand nine, the city of North Bend, they said they were they were land rich as far as all the parks and open space they had, but they just couldn't afford to maintain it all. I mean, their their lawns started growing up like two feet tall. So they went back to the voters and said, the only way we can afford this is to form a Metropolitan Park District. And you'll see this on the next page. But what it is, is they mirrored the boundaries of the city. But then basically, the Metropolitan Park District contracts with the city's park records. And so it was just a new levy. That's the way the city couldn't extend. He supported it. So that's just something to think about. On page two, there's the Metropolitan Park District. Number one is an operating entity. And that's basically where typically the boundaries go beyond the city. Working right now with five human park district, which is the north end. We're gonna go to voters this November for twenty-seven million. Travis Stambaugh, even known as a great resource, they do community surveys. But the voters turned down the first two attempts on a voted bond because it was right. So now they're going back and they think that there are times to try. But that's been a very successful Metropolitan Park District. So, you know, they get input from the city of North Bend, but they have their own Metropolitan Park District Board of Commissioners. So in a sense, there's, you know, the city being whereas on number two option, financing energy for city, you mirror the city boundaries of the city of Covington. You still need the control. City Council has all the input. You're not giving that. And so that's something to think about. Then you can see some examples. There's Normandy Park. They implemented Metropolitan Park District in two thousand nine after their great depression. And there's others. Coolbacks, Olympia, Coleman, Shelton, Tom Law. So essentially, the city council maintains control of those. And then the Parks and Recreation Department is contracted with the Metropolitan Park District. But believe that you're leaning toward option two to mirror the city boundaries of that, correct?
Yeah. Right, working with neighboring cities and
Okay. It's something to think about whether it's Metropolitan Park District or others. When you go out for a voted bond, the taxpayers, the voter approval, the taxpayers that are going to be taxed on that bond are the ones that only had the opportunity to vote on it at the time when you look at your current boundaries. So let's say that, you know, you went, let's say you went out for the voters first, the city did, and then formed a Metropolitan Park District later. The Metropolitan Park District is larger than the city. Only those voters that voted on it at the time. So that's something that should be
No, just a question. So you said that one week.
Yeah, I mean exactly. It comes up a lot with fire districts. I work with a large number of fire districts. You know, the trends now is fire districts where cities are annexing to a fire district. Or cities, fire districts are merging together for a regional fire authority. And so there's one up in Smolisch County. And came to me a couple of years ago. Well, we're thinking about this, but we think these cities are gonna annex in. And I said, well, in a perfect world, you'd wait till all those cities annex in because then you'll have a larger assessed valuation. But it's that'll lower your levy. But like, let's say they went to the voters before the annexation of those cities into the districts. The voters approved the bond and now it's a new special excess levy. And now cities annex in after the fact. Those city, those city taxpayers would not be paying a voted bond because they have the right to. So that's the key. Whoever has the right to vote on it on the boundaries at the time you actually, then they'll be taxed. But if the boundaries change after that, then the ones that didn't have the vote, they're not gonna be taxed for a special. Within the boundaries? Yeah, then they'll be taxed. So, yeah. So like a developer would, you know, developer might have a big, say, fifty home subdivision. So he's paying that tax and now all of a sudden you've got fifty new homes, but essentially goes home, but it's still paying that because it was in the boundaries.
Yeah, I'm just questioning. I'm trying to think with the district that we're looking at is gonna be the city boundaries. There wouldn't be any places we'd add X. Unless the city grows, but
The notch.
Yeah.
The northern notch would be the place that I can think of.
Yeah, I mean, I, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I mean, I appreciate it. I mean, it's minor to worry about who, I think everyone that's gonna be in this potential district is gonna have the right to vote on it, basically.
Slide three. Is this gentleman back here moving the slide? Oh, okay. I didn't see you.
Yeah.
Very smooth. So slide, slide three is interesting. This shows that what they call the debt pass, the legal debt limit for the Metropolitan Park District. So on a non-voted bond, you get a quarter percent of assessed valuation. The non-voted portion is, or non-voted debt maximum is only eleven point two though. But with voter approval, the voted debt capacity is a hundred and twelve. You'll see on another page, that's exactly the same maximum voted debt capacity you have for the category parks, open space, and other categories. So the bottom line there is for a Metropolitan Park District, your maximum voted debt capacity is a hundred and twelve. And then the bottom half, page three, just gives you an example of, you know, multiply, say, going up to seventy-five cents. It shows ten, twenty cents, thirty cents, et cetera. You can see what kinds of revenues that would produce. And again, typically I hear from the Metropolitan Park Districts is, yeah, we've been subsidizing these projects. And now we need to look at a new revenue source. And so, you know, like as an example, it could be that target thirty or forty cents the first year. Then you would bank, or what we call, yeah, bank levy capacity, the difference between what we implement seventy-five cents. And you would choose later to implement those other amounts and maybe you do it because they might have a good sense.
So I'm slow tonight. So if I'm understanding, if we don't go out to vote, we can, the debt that we could incur is only eleven million dollars for Metropolitan Park District.
Well, it's, yeah, it's what we call non-voted.
Non-voted, right.
Yeah, and a non-voted bond is like city non-voted. You have to look at it, see, is this something we can afford?
Right.
Out of our general fund when you look at the regular property tax revenues.
Okay.
And other revenues available to the city, including sales tax.
Okay.
Metropolitan Park District, really the only source of
That I see.
Some portion of that seventy-five cents.
Okay, so this eleven million, we wouldn't be able to pay it back with the the tax levy because we wouldn't, we hadn't gone out to a vote for that. From my understanding, okay.
Right.
And then if with the voted, because of our assessed value, which is four point four, four point five billion, we could go up to a hundred and twelve million dollars?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
And then the seventy-five cents per thousand, that's per year. It would raise three point three million. On the bottom.
Correct.
Okay.
And so another option, it could be depending on the timing of it, you could for a Metropolitan Park District, implement a portion of that set all or a portion of seventy-five cents. And then maybe, you know, you look at it and you go, hey, let's build up some cash reserves. Let's look at a portion of this covering operating costs. But then maybe another portion of it might be capital improvement fund, construction fund, and you build up like five million, ten million. And now instead of going to voters, say, or say the number you, if it's seventy, maybe you only go out to sixty. Save from that Metropolitan Park District. I defer to Casey on that because that's sort of a combination where you want to look at where the cash reserves, operating costs for these projects, et cetera. All that sort of comes into play. Your rating, the city of Covington has a very high rating. You're rated double A plus. So you're one grade below the highest rated triple A, which is kudos to the city and management and all the great things to do. It's quite an accomplishment.
Thanks.
Yeah. Next year.
So that, you know, on page four, I put in these two points on the benefits of Metropolitan Park District. And this also kind of applies to fire districts and others is that, you know, for some communities, I live in the city of Mill Creek. And Mill Creek contracts everything. They're covered by fire district. Their water sewer services is covered by two different utility districts. And so then in a sense, they just really focus in on foreign issues. And so sometimes we'll find that, yeah, you know, we're going to the voters to form a Metropolitan Park District and going to a voted bond after that. In some cases, it can be a clearer message to the taxpayers. So they really understand what they're dealing with. And that really have the confidence that it's all gonna be used just for that. And again, the seventy-five cents can be, seventy-five cents can be used for anything related to parks, open space, the aquatic center, other things. As long as it's related to that category with park open spaces. So now we go to page five. You have a very low amount outstanding debt, non-voted. With the two thousand sixteen refunding of your two thousand seven bond, you're reaching two thousand seven bonds. Whopper intersection, street improvements, you know, refinancing two thousand sixteen. They matured two thousand twenty-seven. They have a holiday pre-impound date on May versus two thousand twenty-six and the outstanding credit survey two to four percent. So your non-voted debt capacity for the city is about sixty-two point nine with voted debt capacity. You have to track out the outstanding. So you're at about a hundred and seventy-seven million. And then you look at parks, open space, community center, facilities for economic development. And that's where you're at a hundred and twelve of there. So that would be another option if you wanted. City can just go out with a voted bond. But I think when you're looking for a formation, the part of the district is, you know, you really want to make sure that you're covering more of those costs. So correct assessment, you know? I hear that from a lot of other.
Can you clarify that? If you just clarify the difference between the one and the other versus just going to a bond?
Yeah, you could go for a voted bond and you would, so you're, you're allowed, there's three categories with voter approval, two and a half percent. General purpose, parks, open space, and then third category, third category really doesn't apply. It's called utility purpose. But you can, if you were, you contracted, you're totally serving like Covington Water District. If you had your own utility system, you can just issue generally bonds. You don't have to. So your choice would be, yeah, you could go to voters, save the seventy million dollar aquatic center. And then it would fall under that category, number two. Then the only question would be, well, you know, a lot of these aquatic centers, pool projects are being subsidized by the best funds. And you think that they're not self-sufficient for that couple of costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the beauty of the Metropolitan Park District. Any questions on page five? So page six, you see the hard and fast numbers. You know, for each ten million dollars you want to finance, and let's say it's spread out over thirty years. Estimated levy rate is approximately nine cents per thousand. So you look at a fifty million dollar bond, that would be approximately forty-five point six cents, or forty-six cents. Sixty million dollar bond, fifty-five cents per thousand. Seventy million, about sixty-four cents and eighty million, seventy-three cents. And then you can see the annual increase on a five hundred thousand dollar home and a monthly increase. And most municipalities, when they're going after the voters, they're really related to what is the monthly, what's the average monthly cost? If you're a million dollar home, then just double those estimates. But no cost. And it also could be that the bond might be issued in two series. Because when you issue taxes and bond proceeds, you have to have a reasonable expectation, spend bond, I mean, thirty-six months. So talking with the architects, they can usually do this. I just did a few for East Pierce Fire Rescue, eighty million dollars. More than seven fire stations, the training center, eight job. So it took them about six years, but it struck it all. So they did it in two series. First series, they did forty million, then three years later, they did six. We are unfortunately in a higher interest rate environment, thanks to our friends at the Great Heights. The outlook is that hopefully the Fed will stop the interest rating increases by the end of this year. And then most likely, keep your fingers crossed, we'll see lower interest rates next year. But before the Fed started the hikes, those in the industry, we just got rolled in expectations, twenty-year money, that's two percent. So it's still hard to believe. I would still do a double take more on your money, it's close to four percent. So it's thirty-year money, like four point four percent. And that's because the longer you finance something, the investors, and that's one of my roles is we, we help you with the structure. We help you with achieving the highest rating, rating upgrade. And sell bonds to investors, get orders for those bonds, with the interest rate, with the yield, interest rate as low as we can, still getting those orders. The longer you finance it for, then the higher rate of return investors expect you. But the longer you finance for, you're spreading out those payments so that it's a lower levy. So it'll fall on your shoulders then to decide what is the appropriate amount that you feel that needs support that fits with your project. So a lot of times, a municipality will come back and say, okay, the architects may come up with one number, but then we may decide, okay, seventy, eighty million is just too much. And we don't, go back to the drawing board. We want it to be, you know, sixty million. Or we want a levy rate to be at fifty cents per thousand or less. You know, so. And that's on the next slide. I just wanted to show you an example where it shows various options where you look at a full eighty million and the full seventy-five cents, and now you're at a dollar forty-eight per thousand. And you can see on a five hundred thousand dollar home, it's sixty dollars, sixty-two dollars per month. I've heard from other districts, a lot of times, they'll look at that and sort of compare it to their local health club. You know, to see what that costs you, that say, yeah, we really do, we gotta come in at less than a hundred dollars a month, whatever it is. So example three, I showed an example where, you know, like, let's say, determine, okay, we want the combined levy to be around a dollar or less. Then maybe you do a sixty million dollar voted bond with a made a fifty-five cent levy. And then you implement, say, forty-five cents of that seventy-five cent levy. So all those things sort of come, come into play. And it may be that you're thinking about a community survey and you can get some input on what the community would be willing to support. The Poseidium Metropolitan Park District, it's a great resource to talk to. And I know that Ethan's Dr. Travis Stambaugh. They're big proponents on doing community surveys, having a citizen advisory committee. And the other great resource, Steve Burr, who's at the William Shore Metropolitan Park District, he speaks, were you at the park?
I'm aware of that team there, but I thought.
Yeah. So page eight. The one thing we're seeing now, there's more and more competition for the taxpayer dollars. So we always say, the early you start out on the voter education process, the better. So try and start that, you know, two years or prior, as far as your messaging, then you can see up there at the top row that there's outreach, there's drafting, the election resolution, the ballot title. But generally, it's a good idea to start that as if you have two years. I mean, you can see the various players involved. I know there's a bond underwriter or financial advisor. There are different acts. With the bond attorney, bonds would be tax exempt, so they help you make sure you're doing all the correct legal steps. There's an election consultant. So some municipalities will hire an election consultant. Or they're happy to provide some, many architects is instrumental coming up with what that cost would be. And then the county treasurer assesses that they're actually gonna levy that voted bond amount. So I think your plan and talking to staff would be, if you decide you can afford on this, go to the voters first to form a Metropolitan Park District.
Yeah, I think that would be, you know, first. Voters wanna, you can go that far. And then that would provide some funding to continue design, frequency design, so then you'd go back out for a capital. And then maybe a few years later, go out for a voted bond. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and so then again, looking at that. I would suggest start that voter education process at least twelve months before the election. Consider, maybe sort of, you think, if you're comfortable with it, consider hiring. So it just.
And I think just to kind of bring that up with the schedule of our planning work that's happening this year is arguing with the kind of bringing whether it's renovation or expansion project of the existing site or something, we back to the council for at the end of the year, we kind of bring the financial options back to it, that, throughout that discussion that happened.
Any questions on that?
This is from a timeline pers- From a timeline perspective, if that came back to council at the end of the year and we decided to move forward with some option, MPD, I'll just use that as an example. Is that when the clock would start ticking on the twelve months, twenty-four months? Or would it probably, since we've done some preliminary work already, like when would we might likely see that on ballot, I guess?
Yeah, I think twelve to twenty-four months is probably a good starting place.
Okay.
What else you have on your plate? Good timing then.
Okay.
You know, the people going around the world.
Okay.
And that's about how much time we need to staff and
Next slide that answers your question more directly. So I'll speak at the conferences with election solvency. Just going to hear from the man. For park and park districts, Metropolitan Park Districts, the election dates they really focus in on is April and August. And so as an example, you really want to avoid November two thousand twenty-four. That'll be the presidential election. That'll be your highest turnout. And sorry to say, it'll be more no voters that, that turnout. So that'll be a tougher one. So if you're gonna go to the voters next year, we would suggest focusing on April or August. If you're looking at the voter, if you're looking to go to the voters in two thousand point five, some municipalities worry about, you know, now in Washington, we're mailing ballots. So you have a certain validation required. So November two thousand twenty-four, you'll probably see the highest turnout. So then you have to make sure, if you're going to voters in two thousand point five, that you validate off of that November two thousand twenty-four. That you have to have at least forty percent vote that, that, at least you have to have at least forty percent validate that from the previous year's November. So that's something to keep in mind. So, you know, then your strategy would be, okay, April or August two thousand twenty-four, possibly go in two thousand twenty-five, but you might have a challenge validating. But on the other hand, you make money. Or go into We generally say avoid the February election because that's when schools, most school districts will go into focus. So you don't want it to be If you're in eastern Washington and it's an outdoor pool project, then we say, yeah, avoid November because by the six to ten inches out there in the snow, people are gonna be less. The other key thing is to the far right hand column, when you look at those red numbers, those are the approximate dates that ballots are mailed out. And what we find is voters out, thirty percent of the voters will fill out their ballot in the first week from the day it's mailed out. So that's an important date to remember. So that's an important date to remember, that whatever election date you select, really focus in on that concept date that's mailed out. That's when you want to really have all of your mailers out. As a municipality, you can only provide factual information, but you can nail it out on the city dime, as I say, as long as it's factual. And use public resources to ask for, to be persuasive. And a lot of, a lot of municipalities, you'll have a citizen advisory committee, and then uh, a lot of times, those folks are converted over to become a yes voter. Then they can actually go out, they're not giving any civic resources, but they can go out. I think I'm right on schedule. Okay, I'm ready for all you.
Well, I have a question actually, or for our team, but the, the surveys that we've been sending out, are they testing the citizens' appetite for um, new facility? Or are they testing, would you be willing to pay for any facility? Haven't really looked at the detail of the survey.
Sure, so um. Just had a survey go out last weekend, that's just the, that's what, on the front of my mind, that is not focused on any financial options. But what we are doing with the series of surveys right now is trying to. Build off of the surveys that we've done back in twenty twenty one, we've already studied that with. So there are some things that are, we're looking negative now, so we want to make sure we understand. I think as we get further on into our this year and the project, we'll probably include some of the survey, but. So we have that.
I, I. I thought that that was included in the survey from a couple of years ago. Am I thinking?
It probably wasn't, uh, I want to go and study, but hopefully I do some follow up. Primary market.
And the simple fact that it was sent out during the pandemic, it sounded, it was maybe changing part, I mean, it would be, it would be nice to get a pulse for what. The residents think of now, we want to want to.
Good one. And we, I think we want to do that towards the end of our survey series, so we can, and they're show alongside with, saying this is what the, the impact will be. What it will offer to provide.
Well, as far as addition.
Like we're saying, it's gonna impact thirty dollars for a month for something that you want to offer to the guy who is back. That of course, the city will respect.
Yeah, maybe will you have a, maybe when you think about it, like a workout, so.
Correct, okay, whether it's pool and a gym, business. Yeah, you want to show all of that.
Then you'll probably, the user fee would probably be a little bit higher for the users that are beyond the city boundaries.
Yeah, we've already made that stuff. You already have.
Last follow up question, I know that we did have, when I was on the steering committee, there was two options. There was the more expensive facility with much more elaborate, it would be, and then the slightly, well, nothing less. Um, funding facility, are we invested in those options, obviously, at least one of them as an option, or are we getting?
We are, we're now looking at our biggest option as the smaller option.
Agree, but that is something that we're looking at, we're not just.
Yeah, we're using that as a starting point, and then we're testing it.
All right, well, I've got a couple of questions, so um. Let's say, uh, hypothetically, we approve the Metropolitan Park District, and that allows us then to go out, raise funds, um, through a vote, or we can go out for a vote. That money that we're raising, it's earmarked for parks, but we're kind of mushing a couple of things together. We're mushing the aquatic center and the parks, saying those are synonymous. Could we spend this money on non-aquatic center stuff? If we've got, you know, we've got the aquatic center over here, and then we want to also maintain our parks, we can do that as well. Or do you have to earmark saying, this money's going to be spent for a certain amount in your, or your fountain, and it's going to disuse?
Yeah, the short answer is whatever it's described in the ballot. Uh, so with a special excess levy voted bond, that requires sixty percent approval. For the formation of the Metropolitan Park District, they implement that at the seventy five, that requires fifty percent approval. Um, so yeah, you would, you would specify in the ballot, I don't know, that you'd be for the bond attorney without the revenue. An aquatic center, uh, equipping the aquatic center, and maybe you could also go on and describe. Various park improvements, trail improvements, you have a community center.
If it's not detailed in ballot measure though, then we still spend money on that?
No, it's only, it's only what's specified.
So it's gotta be in the park, okay. Oh, okay.
And it can only be used for capital. So you cannot use it for. Okay, reason for all this is because it's act exempt bonds, you have the IRS.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense.
I'll add a little bit to that. So there's, I, I like to think of the MPD as kind of two different parks here. There's just the regular levy that's the seventy five, or up to seventy five cents per levy, that's a fifty point one vote. That's up to the, I think it's like three point, three point oh, that could be used on park maintenance and large embalts. It's only when you go through, through an excess levy, that if the sixty percent vote required, then, then if you do very specific.
Right, that, right, that's correct.
Okay. So going back to the survey, it sounds like there's um, kind of three questions that we'll need in there to get clarity from. Is one, just asking, um, our residents, you know, what's their level of support for development of the Metropolitan Park District? And then of those, you know, once they understand what that is, what are they willing, are they willing to pay for the development of certain facilities like an aquatics? And then, third question would be, well, how much, you know, what are you looking at? You know, would you be, what do you think is fair? And so I'd want to have that information, you know, at my, I'd like to know that, you know, before we. When we start on this process, cause that'll give us an indication of how much work we have to do to um. Work with the public.
Yeah, no, I agree, it's a, I hear from other jurisdictions, and sort of that whole big picture where you go, okay, we're, we're coming to you. For a vote on Metropolitan Park District, but we'll be coming back at these later, for a vote on a bond, for these various things. Input on that, community meetings, surveys.
I, I think there are some reg- state regulations though, about what we can ask in a survey. Like, um, how much would you be willing to pay for this? I don't think we can ask that. Um, yeah, so, so you have to be pretty strategic with the questions first, David.
Yeah, yeah, the bond attorney will help you, they'll review that, but they, they don't want you to use the surveys as a pseudo ballot. But there's some, some ways that can be described, and you, you look at um, describing the, the bond of the facilities. And what's, what's your priority, can you rank on, uh, what types of services you want? And all of a sudden, like, aquatic center, sports fields, trails, that you. You're in center.
No, yeah.
I just hope that we don't, we, I would say, to this, you have that, even those people that we have that, we literally have. What they want, what's, so, so as not to waste question wrong, so we can really have information maybe. Because we, we went out, we did that.
Okay, yeah.
But it was three years, probably four years.
Two years, two years ago. You know, another question to ask your architect is, are there ways, maybe you could fade that in, where all of a sudden, you look at. Sort of the priority, what you're going for, you know, let's say that's fifty million, but then there's these other things that are ranked a little bit forward. But maybe you go for the one, the higher ranked project first, and then a few weeks later, you go back to the voters. So it, it's sort of a case by case, and there's maybe a question, then you have to really look at, you know, what's, what's the community willing to spare. So I always say that, with all due respect to the architects, I say, say a lot to the fire districts, I've got one fire district, Stonehenge County, where they, I've been talking with them for ten years. The architect hadn't returned my call before the meetings, they got up there and talked about this advice tag, and talked about the legal death limit, so they had to go back to the drawing.
This is really just informational, I think, at this point. Kind of make sure that. We're, I'll make sure we're looking at the financing side of things, but we're also looking at. Going to new sites and. We're trying to report our. How many directions are we going tonight? Only if we're completely barking up the wrong tree, and we shouldn't be looking at this, but otherwise, we'll just kind of be, you know, obviously, it's Jim, as we work with our architects and folks. Kurt Manning worked for. And then, as I mentioned, we'll be bringing the fact, helpful, like, we're sharing.
So I guess with that, what I would, would say that it's, and I appreciate Jim's timeline, and starting sooner than later. Um, we'll have to have a, a robust outreach program. Um, you know, we put a number of things on the ballot, and it's tough, and it's passed here. Um, so um, I think if we're serious about this, uh, it's, it's gonna take more effort than we've done in the past on some of our ballot measures. This is, so, that's what I would just, I would just say. And that, I guess, to say, if we're barking up the wrong tree, we're not serious about doing the outreach standard, I would say that, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be successful. Yeah, sorry, that.
One of the other elements we may want to consider is um, you know, one of the premises is that having, having an aquatic center, particularly. Close to downtown, maybe that it would generate additional first dollars, that type scenario, right? And, you know, it's kind of hard to say what that would look like without having some of those places built yet, but. I'm wondering if there were, would be an opportunity to maybe give a good guess on, or not a guess, but. A calculation of what additional revenue the city may get from that, to help offset, I, I mean, economic impact, I mean, we have one now, right? It's, it's not close to downtown, but if people are coming in and know for sure that they're spending more money in the city, because, that they wouldn't have spent otherwise, because they are coming to that attraction. But we'd have to be very certain on those, fairly certain on those figures, the fact of health.
Anything else? We assume, but I guess there's, no other questions, Jim, do you have anything to, you wanted to conclude with?
Uh, no, you know, great questions.
Okay.
We have people have questions after.
Yeah, and I'm more than happy to uh, send more examples, even just on different projects that are going on. You didn't interest me, I mean, it's, you're very cutting edge, there's a number of counties that are thinking about similar projects. So it's fascinating, and we really support the local parks.
So that actually triggered so many, sorry, um, that just made me think, you mentioned, there's a number of cities now that are looking at aquatic centers and, and what, what's, you have any indication of what's driving that? And how are they thinking about paying for this?
Yeah, um.
And do they want to partner with Covington?
Yeah.
They can just write a checks.
Yeah. Uh, yes, ID is going to voters for twenty seven million, there's Eastern Washington City, that's a cool, they're gonna go voters for uh, thirteen million. So it, it just depends, I think, on the jurisdiction, and that kind of dictates the size of the block.
The final, if you know, it's not similar to what we're experiencing here, there were a large number of aquatic facilities, pools, facilities.
Yeah.
That coupled with just the growth, the areas.
All right, oh, pass, one more, good.
Um, do we know if there's a trend where we'll start seeing more lifeguards available, because I know that's been an issue? Is that something that?
You're on the headline, you're well set.
We are, yeah.
I think it just has to come down with. A rate, even though they're in the job market, some places struggle with that.
All right, um, well, that's it, the questions, so um, I will bring this special meeting to a close. Thank you.
Thank you all.